Ready to go.
All the order, the meeting, planning is zoning commission work session, March seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Your role call, Mike Adler is absent. David Brown is absent, David Cobb is absent, what was done is here, Lisa Spiriti.
Present.
Andy Guzman.
Here.
Doug Taylor, absent. Al Soric, Councilor.
Here.
Good.
Here. Very good.
Well, I was gonna give an update on our last meeting, but we're the same three that are here, but anyway. I did have a contact with Fred Miller in terms of, well, Bisbee Wire as well as. He's part of the Mike Thornton, TBRP magazine show and they're certainly quite willing to have us there at whatever appropriate time.
Great.
I also talked with Doug and Tracy Taylor, which, and they indicated that they'd love to have us at the farmer's market.
Yeah.
And they'll give us a space.
Wonderful.
So. And I think you're gonna prepare a news release for me at some point in time and we'll review that and then I'll take it to the press.
Okay, got it.
Okay, we'll move on to the agenda today, which is, and I have one discussion of the planning areas and review current issues and existing policies regarding them. View of stakeholders.
Right.
And well, staff, lay us on.
Yes, okay, hey, thank you for reaching out and asking everybody if they would like to be a part of helping us spread the word about the general plan update. I really appreciate it. I will get that in the press release. Okay, so agenda item one, planning areas, I just want to talk about the different planning areas, but I'm gonna talk about specifically is old Bisbee and Warren for this section. So I want to talk a bit about some of the elements from the current general plan. What they want us to do is, there's some bullet points that we can mention, we can talk about identifying specific needs of each planning area. And just want to talk a bit about old Bisbee, some of the things in the old plan are pretty outdated. They say things like talks about how the sewer mains, how they've had a moratorium, again, it's for the development in the area, but I know that's not true. So we're gonna cut that out. And what I'm probably gonna end up doing is I'm probably gonna go through a lot of the old plan and give you sections of it. I'm gonna have the crossed out part and then all I have in read the new texts. So what I'm doing a lot of right now is I'm doing a lot of just going through it page by page, line by line, really just getting a feel or just understanding what it's saying and like what needs to be updated. And I'm doing a lot of asking around for a lot of things, because a lot of stuff is very, just very outdated. And it seems like the plan was updated in two thousand fifteen, but a lot of the text is really from two thousand three. So, which is, you know, a challenge, because it's over twenty years later. So I think the DRB manages to do a lot of work in terms of preserving old Bisbee. And basically keeping historic Bisbee, historic Bisbee with guidelines. With the Warren planning area, some of the stuff that they were saying was that there was a moratorium. Or like they were not allowing any more development there based on the sewer lines in that area too. Is that still the case in Warren? Okay. Let's see, yeah, that's what it says, it said newer development is restricted within the planning area due to sewer deficiencies. And I'm just gonna redline that and say Doug says not anymore. Okay, I'll look more into that. Do you know where I can find more information about that? I mean, I'll talk to Matthew from the city and he might know some stuff, but I think that's why I should ask. So we're gonna just.
Yeah, we bought our house at that period of time, another moratorium.
Yeah?
But that sewer has been put in, so it's no longer the case.
Okay, let's see. We're gonna do that, awesome, wonderful. And. Right. Okay, so we want to talk about some general community enhancements, some issues facing historic Bisbee. Does anybody have any specific ideas or things they want to address in historic Bisbee?
Well, still, certainly are still sewer issues in open.
Yeah. Yeah. There's the sewer lateral project, which that's a project that we're working on right now, so hopefully that will remedy some of that problem.
Just when you say the sewer problems and remedies, I mean, what can, because I, can you explain what are, what are we talking about?
Okay, so.
Remedies that the city is doing or gonna be doing?
Yeah, so we are working currently with Public Works, we're working with a engineer to actually replace the sewer laterals.
Okay.
That go, yeah, to the mains.
Yeah.
That were replaced in two thousand six, so it's really kind of getting everything up to date, getting the system upgraded, so.
And how are you gonna do that in terms of, will the city be doing that, will the financing, where would the financing come from?
Through a grant.
Okay, so, so once we have this, then we're gonna go look for a grant, is that what you?
Yeah, we're working on engineering right now.
Oh, okay, so you wanna come up with the plan that you can present and see if you can get some grants for it?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to see what, how we're gonna know about that.
Yeah, yeah, we're working on replacement.
Okay.
So, other issues facing old Bisbee, or not even issues, but maybe, maybe we can rephrase this, reframe it this way. Visions for old Bisbee, visions or issues?
Well, certainly the gravity fed, fire hydrants, it's a fire situation.
I think this is, that's a major issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a thing that we definitely.
If I may, I think, you know, it's something that can be presented and this is something, you know, this happened, this major file we had. And here we are, hasn't been brought and maybe if, in this committee, we can come up with a recommendation and let's bring it up in front of the council. It seems like we say, oh, there was a problem, there was no, I know there's always the issue, well, we need a grant, we have to look for grant, but we have not come up. We have, there was no recommendation on a plan, how do we go about it, how much it's gonna cost, where do we start? I mean, sadly, it took this fire for us to see how inadequate the situation is.
So I guess.
This could have been a lot worse if it was some wind, this is, will have destroyed Bisbee and sadly, we just, you know, we just. And this, this, this my recommendation to the committee, because you guys have, you know, as a council, you guys, we have, and planning and zoning is one of the most active, I think, as far as I know. That can come up with some, either recommendation or some suggestions that, so we can start the process, I think, don't you guys think that would be a good idea?
Well, as we're identifying general needs at the state of the city.
Yep.
Yeah, and this, I think, should be a top priority, I believe, I do, I think, yeah.
Well, we definitely have a Cochise County Emergency Response Plan and I think that we could, we could build some of that into our general plan as well. So we'll just keep on exploring those, because we need to figure out mainly, I guess, infrastructure for responding to, say, fires, firefighting for that, so. Yeah, okay, so we've got that.
Areas of enhancement, I know with the Port of Entry, there's some fiber, upgraded internet speeds, you know, economically, sixty-seven percent of the workforce is online. We don't have, you know, immediate economic growth, but there is a big sector, you know, for job growth if we have reliable internet.
Okay, that's for.
Old Bisbee particularly bad, Warren's a little better.
Yeah, okay. Okay, let's see.
Yeah, I think what Alicia's saying here is also critical, I would like to add on this. And this probably custom has the potential for some more job growth, that's online growth, and that's one of the issues that I hear, at least from people that come. The unreliability of the internet or the strength of the internet, because you have potentially a lot of, a lot of people with a good job that would like to live, because they like living in Bisbee, they like it. And so, that's, I think that's, that's a major, major.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I, I, I will definitely include that, that's good to know, I mean, there's actually grants for high school, right now especially, there's some grants for high school.
Isn't there some in the infrastructure bill that was passed that, but we just need to go look for it, I think.
Yeah.
And I'm curious, because I know they're doing it for the Port of Entry, I know Patagonia got it.
Wow.
I know Sierra Vista, I'm like, we're right in the middle, where is it, what's the line, what's the plan?
Okay, okay, that's something I need to think about, one of the challenges is that, you know, to give you these grants, I can reach out to a grant writer that we have. Okay, so that's good to know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep that, I'm taking notes on all these things so that we can, you know, because this, this is gonna be for our project for two years. And then ten years down the road, but, you know, strike my iron.
We have to start someone, we have to start someone.
Right. Right, so, okay, so any visions for, and other visions for old Bisbee that you would have?
How about will the sewer be part of this, is this something that, that, that we can, I mean, because I don't know if you, you guys, I've been listening to what the council, the biggest issue that we'll be facing next few years is our plant here. It's getting very old.
Yes.
And I, I also, I always mention this at the meeting, at the council meeting, but we need some maybe, some proposal, because you guys, whenever we put something that has a foundation, rather than someone just, you know, talk about it without the knowledge, without the, the background.
Yeah.
You may want to add this, something, and from what I heard, so you know, a sister city, went after this for their plan. And you were able to get some good money from this, from the state, because that's, that's a major infrastructure issue and we cannot pay for it, I mean, we don't have the money for it, I mean, you could just nickel and dime. So that's something you can also include and see what it is.
Yeah, okay, great, what else?
Ongoing parking.
It's always a.
Parking.
Always a big one.
Okay, uh, yeah.
What do we do with parks? It's an issue.
Yeah.
Get the noise.
Okay, sounds good. Any stakeholders put specifically for old Bisbee you can think of, I have a list of some, but, you know, anyone's off the top of your head, just really quickly. No, no pressure, you don't have, but anybody who thinks a key player?
Well, certainly David Cobb has got, and Lisa in terms of business people on Main Street in old Bisbee, certainly need to be engaged in this.
And do we still, yeah, do we still have a chamber?
No.
No?
No.
There's no organization, business, organization here at all.
Also, I've heard, you know, there's something like what Doug is saying, and I was talking to a couple of people about this, I think somehow we do need, I mean, I don't know, it's our, we have, we can have an input in this, but business. The committee, because we did have apparently at one time, a Chamber of Commerce, but for some reason, the businesses did not like it, or they were not, were not happy with the way it performed.
Well, certainly, just listening to the last KBRP Friday News, Fred Miller was there, he acknowledged, he was the last president of the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, Fred Miller was, I see.
So, and he was expressing that same concern, but anyway, that, that's a long time ago, there'd been no quote, business organization here for some time.
Hey Doug, you could be the one.
Yeah, yeah.
You want, so I guess the question is.
I would go for you, how, how, how?
Why did they disband, or maybe that's just beyond the scope of this, it doesn't matter why they disbanded, I don't want to be tied to all of that.
This is, this is Bisbee.
Okay. Okay, that's the answer to everything, Bisbee, go on, okay, all right, so, any?
One thing, one thing that I always wrestle with is, and I don't know if this is an appropriate place or not, but tourists versus residents. A lot of our, we, we survive because of tourism, but we need a check and balance so that we're doing the best we can for the residents of Bisbee. But still keeping in mind the people that come here can keep us alive, so it's, I'm thinking maybe the person responsible for the visitor's center could somehow be included in one of these groups.
Okay, yeah, let me, I will definitely put that.
And you know, the, the growing Airbnb's that exist are kind of pulling our neighborhoods apart, so, so that's where balance needs to come in.
Yeah. Yes, right, right, okay, good deal, I'll write that down, I know there are, there are methods for actually combating the sort of disintegration of neighborhoods from Airbnb rentals, so. Definitely will look at some issues or some solutions to those problems.
What kind, for example?
So you could, I guess, so many, I was talking with a planner earlier today at a meeting and they said that there's a city in Colorado, it's a small tourist town, and what they're doing is the city has, there's a lot of houses that were on, that were Airbnbs. And the city bought them, they were wholesale, the city would buy them, and they would essentially put a cap on, they would like use, like, in the.
Would he sell them?
What, they wouldn't sell them, what they would do is, is they would sell them to individuals who wanted to live there, but the house had a deed restriction, so that you couldn't, you could only sell it for a certain amount, you couldn't sell it for, if, say, if the market value went way up really quickly, you could only sell it for.
There's a cap on.
As a cap, and, yeah, and it runs with the land, yeah, so, you could do something like that, you know, there's, there's ways to disincentivize, just like, you know, flipping and just dropping, you know, basically profiting off of neighborhoods. Their low prices and then turning around and like flipping them.
I remember the people who owned most of the Airbnbs here, it's an extra home and you would want half a million dollars if you want, the city wants to buy, because it's not, you know, it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, that's, that's, that's a critical issue, I mean, just if we can find a number solution.
The other thing I always bring up in every area that we looked at here was historic preservation.
Right.
That's super important.
Yeah, definitely. One thing, okay, so we talked about a lot of problems, can we talk a bit about what kind of visions you'd like to see for the future for old Bisbee?
Couple of things that I, gone.
No, 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 no.
Well, a couple of things that I observed, well, I was going over the growth areas component of the past general plan. And I see that Lowell has been grouped with Warren, and I think in this plan, this group Lowell with old Bisbee. I think Lowell has become increasingly interesting as a tourist attraction.
Yes.
And, and certainly has much more in common with currently with old Bisbee than with Warren.
Yeah.
That's true.
Um, thank you for bringing that up, because I was wondering about that.
Also something that's been a continuing area of interest to me in terms of tourism, and that is outdoor recreation. It's interesting that the county's tourism brochure has a bicyclist on the cover.
Yep.
And yet, that's not something that we've ever promoted here.
Yeah, yeah.
And you travel through the west and often you see people with their bike on the back of their vehicle, and often there's, you know, families and they're very size of bicycles. We certainly have a bicycle shop here, but we've never really promoted Bisbee as, you know, and I think also, I'm. When I was on the council, the technical issue, but I think we need to be promoting what's called the city trail.
Yeah.
And so I want to bring that up again in terms of, I mean, I think that's a major attraction in terms of, I don't know, anywhere else where you can have that, you know, get up just above the building line, look down into the city, I mean, that really is an extremely interesting.
Yeah, it is.
And I think if there's an opportunity, you know, at the time I investigated this before, it certainly is all public property. There were certainly some individuals who felt that having people up there looking down into us, well, really, there's only one house that I can find where the trail really comes with any, you know, as close at all to that.
Where's this trail?
Well, you need to go on, if you haven't been on, it's just, I'll take you up there sometime, anyway, it just follows the canyon and goes all the way up Sacotexas as well. You look down in.
Okay.
Anyway, just, just above the kind of construction line, so anyway, it's certainly different from normal trails, which are very much, you know, outdoor adventure, this is, you have that. But looking right down into the town, which I think is extremely interesting, I don't know any other place that has this offering, so. And people, whenever you go up there, people, there are people there, so I mean, people find out about this even though we don't promote it.
Yeah. It's, it's, what's the name of the trail?
I call it the city trail.
City trail, yeah, they're social trails.
I could, because I, I've definitely gone up around and I found some trails and I, and I, I wasn't totally sure, you know, like it was one trail kind of up just above OK Street. And it kind of winds around and there's a spot where you can go by a Buddhist shrine that's in a cave.
Are you talking about the Buddhist shrine up there?
Yeah, yeah.
The Bee.
Yeah, that by, near the Bee, and so, yeah, so like I, so like I'm always looking for places to walk up around the hills up in there, you know, that I can, but yeah, okay.
But anyway, there's certainly an opportunity that, as you say, how do you get there, that's a big question, in terms, and why aren't we telling people how to get there?
Yeah.
Rather than trying to let a lot of people explore on their own to get there.
Okay.
And I think there's only, you know, trails basically in good condition. There is a little bit of issue when you come down into High Road, you kind of have, you know, there's a need to build some steps there, but other than that, there's, you know, it's really.
Okay.
An excellent condition, but anyway, it's certainly a marketing item and certainly outdoor recreation in addition to the walking, you know, the walking tours of old Bisbee, historic tours, but I think that is certainly something that, that we have never capitalized on.
Being active has been leading hikes up there, because we've seen how somebody's been trimming some of the bushes up there and stuff.
It's public property, okay, I'll look at that, all right, great, I like that, good deal, any other visions?
Yeah, didn't Doug, I wasn't here, I was gone then, didn't Bisbee, like, years ago, used to have a bicycle, a bike race called Boilota?
Well, to Bisbee in the old days, right?
Yeah, I mean, even though during the time, I was not, I was overseas that time, but it used to have a major bicycle event that would come, like, it's like world recognized. Don't know if you guys familiar, or you guys hear when this was happening?
That was before my time.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, there still are a couple of, you know, you see people out on the.
Yeah, there was some, yeah, but Bisbee did have, was very successful and people would come from all over, and it used to be a major event like the stairs.
Okay.
And so bicycling, like, it's, it's, it's something that we can promote, it's, it's, it's.
Well, certainly, back when I was focused on this, I outlined actually the trail, it's interesting going up High Lowsome Road, in terms of the trail, and going, looping around and actually going, getting all the way down almost to Cochise College and then down to the border, and come up, pass the airport, and of course, we do have an old railroad bed that runs actually from Warren down the border and then along the border.
Yeah.
Which I think Fels Dodge, or Fels Dodge Freeport owns.
Yeah.
But certainly, that certainly is, I mean, I've given some thought in terms of what, what might be a really unique bicycle experiences that, that we might develop and promote. And I was just reading in the Herald Review, I believe it was Benson, they were focusing on Benson here in the last year or two, and anyway, there was personally interviewed who was promoting, you know, was taking the pot herself to promote bicycling in Benson, but we've got much more to offer here than there is.
I, I, I definitely with you on that, I think it's fantastic, I like the idea of a trail network in and out of, through, around, in and out of old Bisbee. Especially like towards High Lowsome Road, that would be a kind of a fascinating trail system, I think.
Well, certainly the economic benefits of tourism basically go to the town where the person spends the night. And if people are just here for a day tripper, the benefit is only less than half of what, than what it is anywhere else, and I think we need to provide people things to do in the evening, and I was going to say, wonderful.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm amazed, I mean, I can't understand it, I can't understand it, tell you the truth, but anyway, there's people out there doing that.
Let me tell you, and sometimes you will have twenty thirty people, because I know they meet in front of my shop and I'll be like, you paid twenty some dollars just to walk?
Yeah.
I don't give, that's exactly what we need in terms of things that.
But you don't have experiences.
Well, requires people to stay overnight to participate in it, in the same way, I mean, we need to get people out for things to do in early morning and evening, if they're staying overnight, choose to stay here rather than somewhere else.
Right.
And make this overnight destination rather than a day tripper, I mean, I think.
Right, right.
We do good in terms of day trippers too, I mean, I think we probably should, extract more money from day trippers than any other town I'm aware of, but anyway, I think the success research would indicate is getting people to stay here overnight.
Yeah, okay, great, it sounds good.
Well, I will talk to Ken Wallace, you know, Bisbee brothel.
Yeah.
He was involved, I think, back then.
With the.
About that.
Yeah, I just, I just, I was talking, it's called Volta de Bisbee, like Volta de Bisbee. It was a major, I think the only, when the Southern race was first run, was run in nineteen seventy-six for a few years, and then it was a, was a major event. It's called La Viu, I don't know, Volta de Bisbee, yeah, de Bisbee. And that brought hundreds of bicyclists from all over, it was world famous. But this will, will need someone like, if you want to do it as an event, probably somebody in the private sector, like with the stairs, somebody to guide this and.
Yeah, okay.
Do it, yeah.
Yes, should, okay, we're events.
Also, just, this is outside of Bisbee, which all of these outdoor adventure things are, but anyway, that I know in my communications with the. There is a proposal, I guess they call it the Mule Mountain Escondido Falls, which is just across the divide. And certainly during rainy season, it's quite a spectacular waterfall. And the nature conservancy has actually been, has been approached in terms of the owner of turning this into some type of a public area.
Okay.
So, and I think it's kind of off and on again, but anyway, the representative for not, for the nature conservancy.
You mentioned, actually, actually, it's funny that you said that a few weeks ago, this gentleman stopped by my shop, but I cannot remember his name, he's from the council. And he was meeting with someone here in Bisbee, but he stopped at my shop for a little while and said, tell me about this. The owner of that area, of that land, actually, you know, by the Wayfair Company that sells furniture, they own that place and they were willing to donate it to the city, to the city of Bisbee. And he actually approached them, I will give you his card, he approached them, the owner of the Wayfair, because they are into bicycling, they are into nature, they are into hiking. I think that's the other thing, you're, you know, multi-billioner, and, and you are willing to hand it over to the city, but the only issue that was, he, that, at least he was telling me, but I'll, I'll give, I'll give him all his card, I think I still have that at the shop.
Yeah.
And, and for some, like, on and off again, broke because the city wasn't, and it was a hundred thousand dollars needed to do the studies and stuff. And, um, and for some like on and off again broke because the city wasn't on and it was a hundred thousand dollars needed to do the studies and stuff. And these guys with their multi billion dollar wealth, they decided they were willing to give you this, but they were not willing to give that extra hundred thousand dollars for the study. And he said, we will hand you over, but you know, the city and the city at that time, I don't know who was in charge or.
Who, what, yeah.
Yeah.
Where was this? What, where?
Where the waterfall, you know, where the.
Oh, the falls?
Yeah, yeah, before the tunnel, you know, the falls, yeah, yeah, yeah. That, that, that area is owned by the Wayfair. You know, Wayfair, the furniture company online, Wayfair.
Oh, yeah.
You, you own it literally, you own it and you were willing to, to, to donate it to the city. To, but has to be used as, because they are into hiking, that's the, that's the.
That's it.
As long, and there was a study and then you went back to them, the city said, well, we, we will not pay for the, for the study. And they were not willing to pay that extra hundred thousand dollars, you know, but he was just telling me about the story. It's funny, Doug, just, just mention it. This happened a week, few weeks ago, he stopped by my shop.
Yeah, I think Mark Ryan probably would have.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, I don't know, maybe it's him, yeah.
Yeah, you get dropped by Bisbee.
So you know him, you know him, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But anyway, he was, it's, it's been an ongoing discussion, but anyway, he brought that up again with me that there's.
Yeah, okay, so that's him, yeah.
Still.
Yeah, national monument, something like that. Okay, got it. Uh, I'll have to figure that one. Okay, really quickly. Um, let's, can we talk a bit, just a little bit about Lowell? Just for a minute, because you, you mentioned that as being a part of, more like a part of Old Bisbee. Um, I, I need to maybe talk with some people about Lowell history. Everybody tells me that Lowell is going to be demolished at some point. I don't know. Like, I'm just trying to like figure out like what the story is with Lowell.
Well, I think Freeport owns most of the property, but there are a number of individual private property owners there.
Yeah.
Uh, and certainly was interesting, we went through the. Well, I don't know who complained, but anyway, somebody complained that there was too many cars parked permanently on Erie Street.
Okay.
That is a major tourist attraction. I want to tell you, I mean, it's interesting.
People want here.
Everybody that comes to Bisbee goes there actually eventually, every, every single tourist.
Well, Bisbee Breakfast Company is really active there and, and. I mean, that, that really is a draw in terms of eating there and then walking up and down the street. I mean, you see that. And I think that's really something. And there's several individuals that are, you know, kind of committed to developing that.
Yeah.
And have done some things over the years, but anyway, that.
So are they renting the buildings or do they actually own the buildings but not the land?
I think they own the land.
Right.
They do?
Yeah, the land, uh, I know, they, I, I mean, the, I think, uh, Freeport owned the land.
Owns the land still.
But people, whoever, I think most of the buildings are owned by like, unless they lease it, uh, maybe, I'm, I'm not sure. I think I know they own the land, but the building, I don't know. You could buy the building for like hundred year, I don't know, this is.
A lease or something?
Long term lease, yeah.
So I've, I've looked at that and on the property tax card, it looks like it's individual owner.
Yes, own the building.
But in reality, Freeport owns all of our land.
Yes.
If you look at our CCNR, we only own up to like forty feet.
Yeah, everything like beneath the, the, yeah, yeah.
So whether there's a additional land lease, like I've seen some stuff with BLM where there was a structure. But there was like a hundred year land lease with BLM, might be a similar.
Okay.
But the question is, when does that expire?
Right.
And is it renewed if that is the scenario?
Okay, next up, can we talk a bit about the Warren planning area? Any, uh, issues or visions for that area?
Well, certainly we're, you know, we're in the process of designating that in the historic district. So anyway, that certainly is something. It's new and we want to support.
Yes, okay, definitely, we will definitely write that into the plan. Okay.
No, what else you can do with Warren? I mean, it's just flat.
I mean, the thing about Warren, okay, so here's my idea for Warren, right? Which is, I think that, um. Uh, Arizona Street has a lot of potential to really be, I mean, it, it's growing slowly. It's actually getting, you know. They just got a new cafe, which is pretty great.
Yes.
And they got, um, they got, um, that gym and the brewery is being built, yeah, so it's happening, you know? So I'm, I'm thinking a lot about, um, yeah, the, the main, you know, Arizona Street being like maybe potentially. For the big, there's a lot of big empty lots there and I feel like there's potential for promoting mixed use, maybe like. Kind of following the same patterns that already exist there, you know, like you have like maybe some retail on the bottom and a store, you know, one or two stories above. Um, with apartments, housing. So, and I'm thinking about just a couple of lots, like a lot across the street in the Methodist Church. Yeah, so that's sort of like an idea I was having for promoting that in Warren. That was just my big Warren idea. It's like Warren is a pretty nice place.
I mean, to make, like, to focus or to designate like Arizona Street like the heart of, like, has, has a distinction. Becomes like, you know, active, social, coffee shop, restaurant.
Yeah, because the city hall is going to be there.
Yeah, and the city hall is going to be down there. That's great. That's, that's, yeah, I can see, I can see potential, yeah.
Another one of my dreams, we still have the whole fire station on Bisbee Road.
Okay.
Uh, which, uh, you know, there's, I guess there was some discussion about opening that for, we got more migrants.
Yes.
Uh, but anyway, I mean, that's certainly not permanent, but anyway. One of the things that I. We have two of the best fire trucks, nineteen seventeen fire trucks. They're sitting up. I'm not sure what it's called up, up Tunestown.
Tunestown, yeah.
And anyway, I would love to get those somewhere.
Yeah.
On display where people can actually see those. And if I can get them in the restoration museum, I, I get them in there, but there's no way we're going to get them in there. Unless somebody runs into our window and drive a truck in there while we repair the window again. But anyway, that. But anyway, that certainly would be a wonderful location for that, it's no firehouse now in terms of.
Yeah.
And, and they're.
And the city owns that still, I mean, the city owns that.
Right.
I've, I've heard like there was some, like a couple of years ago, somebody was talking about converting it and making like a cup, you know, like a. Cup, were you involved in that?
There was, right, it was pretty, it was pretty flaky at the, but anyway, yeah. But anyway, that's still something that, uh, I mean, I would love to, you know, again, the city could facilitate in terms of some type of a. Private business there. I mean, we already have a coffee shop, but anyway.
Yeah.
But with the condition that these fire engines would be on display there.
Sure. You get a plan for it, yeah.
But anyway, we still, I mean, they're just a matched pair. I mean, this is, this is wonderful resource that we have. That it's just being, it's stashed away. I mean, that's in where they're at and seeing it's kind of falling in and so forth, so we need to protect them.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's something that can be brought up and presented, looked at, start the process on, like, say, make it mixed use, like, you know, people. Like a museum firefighter, maybe with a restaurant, team, team place that the private sector can be involved in. I think that's a good idea. That would add to Warren, you know, hey, let's go see the, that restaurant that has the fire trucks.
Right, exactly.
Well.
And experience that.
Obviously, this is something that I played around with for some time, but anyway, just, uh, something I saw somewhere else and then were now aware of. Anyway, where they had set up, uh, fire engine, well, actually with a car rather than fire engine, so a fire engine would even be better. But anyway, where it's set up where kids can get on fire, but anyway, set up with a screen.
Yeah.
Which is a, is a, is a video of the fire truck coming down Main Street. Which we used to do for Christmas and so forth, right, so interacting, that would be actually extremely attractive to the kids. In terms of playing on it and then actually get the sensations, you're coming down Main Street on a fire on this old truck there. You got more detail.
Well, you have to think, perhaps think also, you know, now that you mentioned this, the biggest thing I hear being in Bisbee, I'm talking to people, you know, visitors. We, Bisbee does not have any, except for the mine tour, there's no other activities for family, family oriented.
Yeah, yeah.
Except the bars, that's what he tells you, except the bars.
Family.
I don't know, I mean, it's something that I always thought, what would be, I, I had a couple of wild ideas, have a zip line over there, a pit. I mean, I, I, you know, I said, oh, I'll do that, but you know, you have a company, won't let us do that.
Zip line over the pit.
Yeah, I mean, uh, oh, just like car, I, I mean, uh, it's sad, I see a lot of kids, a lot of families. Where we basically don't have very much for, for.
Right.
Even for, yeah, no, for the locals, we don't have a lot of kids and they have their parks, but we really don't have. A lot of things, family oriented, kids oriented.
Okay, more family oriented stuff, okay.
I can see that if you can come up with some ideas and with the private sector and you can.
Well, certainly, you know, there are people who say, well, this is a drinking town, party town. But the reality is, when you look who's on the streets, there's a large number of young families pushing strollers.
Let me tell you, I tell you personally, I mean, you know, I'm at the store and I get a lot of most of these people, a lot of families. A lot, my, my store becomes like the thing, oh, candies and stuff.
Yeah.
And I get upset because the demand destroying everything because that's the only fun they have.
Right.
And many of them are Spanish speakers, that's the other nice thing. I mean, I don't know where they're coming from, frankly, obviously from Sonora. Or Aguaprieta or whatever, but often it's multi generational.
Yeah.
Uh, and you often find that a coffee company and so forth.
So maybe Alicia would open a family oriented business, huh?
Well, well, but it is attractive now, but we need to do more.
Yes, yes.
Well, I, so I was in Pennsylvania and it was an interesting, I'm gonna call it educational historic exhibit from the old mining. They had this like, like, at first I was like, are people paying to go in nature? And then I realized it was an hour of New York City. And they have this, it's just a wooden thing that they built, but you had little sifters and you could put it in, sift out, sift out the ore. And it was teaching about the mining process, but it was.
It's interactive, you know, like, oh, wow, and it's a mining town.
Yeah, so you buy, buy a bag of rocks for ten bucks and then your hours of experience and there was a lot of kids.
I like that, I like that.
So like, they have all that space. I mean, Vista Park's great, there's, there's plenty of, you know.
Yeah.
Opportunities for exhibits or.
Certainly, mine tour is very attractive. My niece, she, she had eleven year old triple visiting me over New Years. Anyway, they were enthralled with Bisbee. I mean, my, the oldest boy, he was, when he left, he says, as soon as I graduate from high school, he's eleven now. I'm gonna move to Bisbee, he says.
Yeah, I mean, every, kids, like, kids love it.
And of course, uh, and part of that, we went, not only did enjoy Bisbee wandering around, and of course, it's interesting where you, you know, I know everybody. So as we're walking around, you're introducing people and so, you know, the, uh, the person who's playing her guitar on the street. She all of a sudden composes Nebraska song, you know, from my, you know, this, this is the type of thing. And likewise, we were out at White Water Draw and of course, they were totally enthralled with the cranes. And of course, this is my family's from Nebraska and they passed through Nebraska, but they'd never seen this magnitude of cranes. And so he was making the statement.
That's talking about that, that's a, that's a good, because it came to my attention, this lady came by my shop. It's how you get ideas because someone will tell you, something, say, why didn't I think about it? And she said, why don't you have a cranes T-shirt that says, you know, you know? And that's something, and actually, it's funny you say this because a lot of people that I've, I've, I'm Bisbee, one of the main destinations is to go and see the cranes. The cranes have become, and it's something maybe we can always also promote as part of visiting Bisbee. You get to do this, you get to do this and go see the cranes.
Yeah.
And, and that's, uh, that, 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 I think, will be some as futuristic promotion of Bisbee. A part of it is the cranes and you can spend time here, forty five minutes, you can go see, do this and this and go see the cranes. And that's an amazing sight. I don't, have you seen the militia? Have you gone out there?
Not yet.
It's one of the most amazing things. You're talking about tens of thousands of big birds flying, the area is beautiful. I mean, you go sit either in the morning, when the evening, when they come in, when they're leaving, it's, 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 it's an incredible sight.
Right.
It's White Water, it's called White Water Draw, where you go if you're, you know, it's for, just you Google it, you have a map, it will take you there. But I didn't realize how, Doug, how many people come to Bisbee as part of their major, uh, uh, goal is to go to see the cranes. Because apparently they become famous.
Yeah, definitely, pushing the, the natural environment around this, which is amazing, you know, I mean, okay, agenda item two. Do you have to close the agenda item one? Okay, we're talking agenda item one.
Do we identify stakeholders for this one?
Can I get you all to email me potential stakeholders? If you have some, if you can, if you can please rustle up some stakeholders for each of these areas, I'll, I'll send you an email to remind you.
I'll do that.
Uh, yeah, don't worry, you know, it's, it's something we're going to have to find out right now. Uh, okay.
I made also a comment that, uh, back when I was on the council, more focused on these things. And anyway, I had a very good relationship with Freeport in terms of allowing people to come on their property. Part of this hiking and outdoor adventure. And, and they were extremely, the local people were extremely supportive of this and they finally got to their, their attorney in Phoenix and he put a kibosh to it. There's some really opportunities here, uh, and I think one of the things is, uh, a member that's coming up in, in meetings. And that is ensuring that we keep the headframes.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a distinctive part of Bisbee's landscape is the headframes. And you visit Butte, Montana, and they really make use of those headframes. I mean, I, one of the, one of them is actually an outdoor theater.
Really?
It's on kind of the hillside, so you're sitting on the hillside on the ground, but under the headframe is actually the stage in which they had performances. But anyway, that's certainly a big part of the landscape of, of Butte.
That's great. I love that idea. I mean, you know, I, I'm actually meeting with, um, the, the representative from Freeport. I, I met her today. And I'm actually having a meeting with her at the end of, towards the end of this month. So, um, if you can think of some stuff I could bring up to them.
Can we bring that back? I mean, this was a major, uh, because I remember when I just opened the business for two days. Where people come from all over and get to go, pay about twenty some dollars and go and look for rocks and scavenge for rocks. And, and then all of a sudden, because what, insurance purpose or, yeah.
Used to be the turquoise, huh?
Right.
Yeah, but it's amazing. I, I, I remember so many people would come to town just to go and do that. They spend two days, pay that fee, the local including visitors, and you'll go scavenge. I don't know if that's something we can really approach them about or is not.
Well, I think, I know it's liability or whatever. I mean, I did once, I thought it was the most boring thing I ever did.
Yeah.
I talked to a lot of other people who come down and this is a highlight for them.
I, I, I know because they will come over, oh, what, I don't find this and say, I could have given it to you for two bucks and you found it.
Well, something very specific, if you're talking with Freeport.
Yes.
Uh, and certainly the manager here is very much familiar with this, and that is that I actually developed a guided tour of what's called the Galena. Headframe, which is right behind the old, the new high school.
Yeah.
Look up, anyway, and you, you enter it from the junction between, uh. I call it the school terrace road and ninety two. And it really shows reclamation, because you're able to look across this, the highway in terms of what was, um. Called, the community was. Basically. Covered up. Anyway, there's coal mine and there's a couple of mines there, you can look over it there. Anyways, very, then you're up above, so you look down into Warren, it's really quite an interesting short walk. And it shows some of the restoration efforts that they are doing, which they're certainly wanting to promote that, but. Uh, and certainly the, the local manager was very much enamored with this project, but I think some higher ups. The kibosh on it, but anyway, they actually developed a guided tour of, of that.
And was that going to the headframe up there?
You walk up to the headframe, uh, what's called the Blue Headframe, which is above the high school basically.
Oh, okay.
See, I think that would be something that the museum could get involved, if they would let you, let us do it.
Well, I think certainly that, you know, you'd be, you know, what you want to promote is that this would be a guided tour. You would, you wouldn't do it unless you were guided, you don't want people up there.
Yeah, they don't go on their own land.
Right.
Right.
Uh, but anyway, that, and there's some other areas we talked about in terms of. Freeport properties would be excellent tours, but anyway, that if someone would give guided, there's an opportunity to give guided tours. So I guess I can share that with, with her and I've already developed the, the tour myself, so I'm ready to go.
It would be another family thing.
Yeah, that would be a family, yeah, definitely.
You know, another interesting thing, I, I think about this all the time, when my, my, when my family was here, they're all, they're eleven year old kids. And so they're, they're painting and doing artwork and so, so anyway, Judy Perry is a longtime friend of mine. And so she's turning her little house here in Bisbee into Judy Perry Museum.
Yeah.
So anyway, I called her up and so we went up, they were enamored with her, I mean, she had some of her early paintings, which is similar to the things that my. My great nieces and nephews are doing right now, they're pretty primitive, you know?
Yeah.
And anyway, so anyway, that was, they were in, totally enamored with it.
She has a huge following. She has the biggest following of, I mean, from all over they come to see her.
She's certainly our most lucrative artist, but anyway, this, she is opening her house to quote a Judy Perry Museum.
Oh, really?
And has some of her early paintings, uh, and so you can see her evolution. So anyway, I don't know at what point that that's gonna be publicly open, but anyway, it certainly is open by request. But anyway, that was something that my family really, really enjoyed.
Wow.
Yes. Okay, that's, those are all really fantastic ideas, it's really exciting, um, I really liked a lot of it. Um, can we move to item two?
Okay, what is, do is different from the item one discussed, different.
Yeah, so.
Different growth areas and the financial growth scenarios and how policies in the current plan affect it.
Yeah, so that is going to be essentially, we're, I'm talking about our growth areas. So we talked about, you know, places that I'd say there's not a lot of growth happening, but there's the areas that really have a lot of room. And it's, you know, Bisbee's really pushing for any new development, uh, substantial development to happen in, for example, um, San Jose area. And areas like, uh, um, yeah, San Jose, Don Louie, Chujica Terrace, um, that growth area. And then also, uh, Saginaw, um, and then other, and then the other smaller areas like Galena, Tin Town, Bakersville. Um, we want to talk a little bit about, um, uh, perhaps maybe you can start with the San Jose area. One thing, so basically from the old plan, San Jose is identified as one of the two growth areas for Bisbee. Uh, there is, um, you know, there's gonna be a water treatment plant is something that we're working on. Uh, it's closer to the Naco port of entry into the United States. Uh, it's, uh, the old plan mentioned something about a tourist oriented shuttle service connecting to historic Bisbee. Which I'm thinking the Bisbee bus is sort of like that, whatever, uh, is the, you know, the, probably the, the manifestation of that goal. Um, so, um, I, um, think that, um, we, we can think about what we would like to see in that, in that area in San Jose.
Well, certainly Camp Naco is something that's gonna be huge at some point in time here, because that's attached to the San Jose area.
Yeah, so that's a potential, that's a potential point that may be annexed in the future. Uh, so, and because I was thinking about the Naco area, you know, if we annex it, then that would, that would really be, that would be an interesting area. Because we'd really be focusing more on that, um. I, so I guess I'll start with what I was thinking about with San Jose. You know, we've been talking about this for the last several planning and zoning meetings, but having the sort of growth overlay along existing utility lines. And, uh, really kind of pushing towards a cohesive, um, sort of urban environment, right? I'm thinking about like the, you know, there's a Bisbee area master mobility plan, which really outlines, uh, bike and walking trails, multi-use trails. Along ninety-two is sort of like a park like setting, uh, that connects, so you can actually get to different parts of town without driving if you don't have a car. Uh, or don't want to drive. So, um, and I was thinking a lot about the growth area down there along Naco Highway, uh, almost, I, I like to think of it as downtown San Jose. Uh, yeah, right, so essentially what I want to do is promote a bit more, if there's gonna be any growth, really try to keep it along those, those existing, um. Uh, you know, um, utility lines. And we're not talking about anything crazy, but some mixed use, some stores, something that people could feel it's a cohesive neighborhood. Instead of, it's kind of right now, sort of scattered, and even if you walk along, if you walk along Naco Highway from ninety-two. You, you don't even like get to your first cross street to go into a neighborhood for like almost a mile, it seems like. And you're like, how, how can I get over to Santa Cruz Street or some of those other spots behind there, you know? Um, and then on the other side, you know, there's the, there's the woman who wants to build a, she wants to do a, a mixed use, um, sort of complex. With a lot of small houses and, um, and also a kind of, I don't know if you've been to the MSA Annex in Tucson. It's essentially, um, it's kind of like a trendy kind of, I, I don't wanna say it's upscale, but it's kind of, it's a little bit like that. But it's made out of old shipping containers and it's like this very, like almost like a plaza area. And there's like a couple of restaurants or food stands and there's like one bar and then a bunch of, uh, really trendy stores. There's a bike shop and, uh, and like a, like a, it's almost like a Tucson, um, themed gift shop. And some other kind of high-end stuff and some, you know, plant stores or whatever. So, um, I was thinking a lot about the, the growth pattern for San Jose. Is you're kind of concentrating a lot of stuff along that area that there's already a lot of stuff, but then there's a lot of little gaps everywhere. And really promoting this kind of growth that really, um, can help shape and form an identity for the area. As opposed to highway town, you know, where you just drive through. And because in this old plan, they really, they kind of, I mean, your, your plan is supposed to be, um, more like positive. And it's sort of like, yeah, well, there's not really much here, so you should just let it be whatever, you know? And I'm like, what kind of plan is that? Thanks to the planning center, anyway, so, uh. So I'm thinking about being more intentional with land uses around there, um, and making it a de- a destination in its own right. Or a place to live that might not be quite have the, the exciting bones of old Bisbee. But still a nice place to live and to visit and to spend time if you're, if you're a family that lives here, so.
We also have a property there on Melody Lane that the city, I guess, owns now, was.
Yeah.
Needed to them and I, so, uh.
Yeah.
In terms of some housing alternatives there.
Yeah.
Certainly, uh, something that can, can, city can be a little more creative on.
Yeah, just gotta find a, somebody who can pull the trigger on buying it and actually developing it.
Of course, it's just, yeah, you had someone that, you know, turn it over to the city, because it just, the cost associating with connecting it to the sewer line, to the water line.
Yeah.
To build the roads. I mean, I think just like with Bisbee right now, even though we have an issue in the housing. The biggest issue is we don't have economic activities that warrant, I mean. Even if you build homes, the people that are gonna live in those homes, they need an income, they need to have a job. So this is, you know, it's.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just, except for the service industry, or in a restaurant. And you have a couple of places that opens seven days a week, the rest of ten, so many days, so you, you doesn't need for this. But I think it just, it just, for, for someone to come in and pour some money into this, you need to see the potential. On their return on their investment and how much they can, they can sell it for, how much they can rent it for.
Yeah.
So I don't know, I mean, this is, it's, it's, it's tough. I mean, if you build it, they will come, something will happen, but you just, and, you know, city cannot do this. You need a private sector and the private sector, they're all about, you know, getting their money back, they're not gonna.
Right, maximum ROI.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I mean.
I think, I think one of our goals when we talked about a, um, meeting or two ago was the zoning overlay.
Yeah.
To allow for development and even if we just have something like that in place.
Yeah.
And something that would call for, you know, establish what kind of affordable homes could be built there. What, what, how many homes will equal this much, um, what do you call it, yeah, commercial.
Yeah.
And the paths, walking paths and bike paths, I think if we just lay the, the framework in place.
Yeah.
And then if somebody does.
Yeah, we'll come from there, you're right, our job is, yes, I, I, I think, yeah.
If some of them would be bucks, we'll have something in place that will accommodate.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I think that's, that's a good way to, to, to look at it, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you build it, they come, if you will build it, if you build it, they will come, that's what I'm trying to say.
Because any business is gonna, I mean, they need, they need people.
Yeah.
They need people, exactly.
They need a community in order to support the business, so.
Yeah.
And I think about that a lot too, when people come here and they wanna live here and maybe they can't quite make it in the old Bisbee and buy a house there. Um, you know, really promoting homeownership in, I mean, I'd love to see people, especially right now, homeownership is just at such a low. And people are saying crazy things like, oh, nobody will ever own a house or whatever, and it's like, okay, whatever, you know? And I, I rather, you know, see the path to homeownership be available. And I, I think that here, since we are a rural area, there's a lot of resources with USDA rural development homeowner loans, you know? And so they subsidize your loan for you, um, which I think is pretty great, you know? Especially if you can get really nice tidy starter homes or something, you know?
Well, I, I was just thinking out loud, like, growth, southeast Tucson's a great example, right? It's a bunch of track homes in the middle of the desert.
Yeah, along the freeway.
Now there's so many of them that the commercial people are starting to come in, they built a car wash, they built a Walgreen, they built Safeway, right?
Yeah.
So like San Jose, that's like our little corporate commercial district.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the unfortunate thing is, is we have one grocery store, so we're, we're on this island of price gouging, because there's no competitors.
Right.
We've got Burger King, like, there's, like Dollar General, they saw a need for a market, you know, they're like, hey, let's build a brand new building. Um, but understanding what corporations service small communities. And then also with the housing additions, the dream of homeownership is, can be a reality versus in the metro.
Right.
If you have, if you have, like I said, remote work.
Mm-hmm, a lot of people do, I mean, I've done that.
That's, that's what we need to look at, yeah, I mean, you're right. It just like with, like you said, with the grocery store, I mean, with Safeway, I think Safeway does, does not fully depends on, 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 on Bisbee. I think, I will think, I don't have the numbers or I don't have any solid information, but probably, uh, big part of the sales is from across the border, right? They're from Mexico, a lot of, they come in and do their shopping there. Uh, with the dollar store, because I think when people say, why don't we have another grocery store? If you wanna do a full-fledged grocery store, which means you have to do meat, you have to do vegetable, what, the perishable? It becomes very expensive if you don't have a turnover on those. And that's what, that's why you have dollar stores open, because most of these can package, you know, have a long expiry date. Uh, versus a grocery store, I see, because I come from the business and I see the gouging, I mean, unbelievable. I can tell you this officially, somebody who knows prices, they gouge and they gouge big.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not talking about small, not talking ten percent, fifteen percent, I'm talking about sometime fifty percent. Like if you buy here versus if you buy at price just in service. I see that, I mean, I, I go in, I say, wow, because I know how much things cost.
Yeah.
And, and I said, why are they doing that? And because they can.
Yeah.
They can.
See, I look at it from, so I was in Chicago and there was a, a store called Go. They have its own grocery store.
Yeah.
And I look at that and I go, okay, there's, I always watch Safeway to make sure the food's not expired, if they will.
Yes, yes.
But if you know what your community is buying with technology, you know exactly what to stock.
Yeah, you're right.
So utilizing technology as, you know, as it changes.
I think they're lazy about doing that here, they're just saying, you know, people have no choice. And if, maybe if they are competitors, but someone is willing to lose money in the beginning, so it's, it's, it's hard. I mean, it's, uh, you know, I mean, that's why we have, how many dollar stores now, we're gonna have three or four?
I mean, it, that's true though, they, their model is growth, right? And then if they lose on a store, like a lot of major chains, that they'll, they lose money, but they'll do it in case, so they get niched in that community.
Yeah, but you need somebody with a deep pocket to do it, small, you know, a small company, it's hard to do it, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I know, so that's great, I mean, I like the idea of, like you said, you have remote workers. You could pitch sort of San Jose as this place where you can buy a home, because we're rebuilding homes and they're small. You could, uh, you know, work on perhaps, um, even pitching the idea of, uh, maybe entrepreneurship here or something. Because you can get assistance, again, with the USDA, like they have rural, um, this small business loans and cooperative business loans. You know, that are subsidized. I always think about that, you know, the resources that we have at our fingertips currently. Um, so, I mean, it, it could be an interesting experiment, you know, push for that. Or at least to let it grow organically and just not sort of, instead of like just letting it kind of spiral and would it be whatever it is, you know? Because right now, you know, I don't, you know.
Well, certainly, one thing we haven't talked about yet.
Yeah.
Here in the meeting is assisted living.
Yep, that's also a thing.
We have, you know, we got good medical services here, but frankly, the town, once you reach a certain age, you gotta leave.
Really?
Other option, I mean, and I'm.
I've seen a lot of people.
And I'm approaching that, I'm approaching that, anyway, we did, uh, I don't know how, many years, fifteen years ago, we did a study in terms of feasibility study of assisted living here. And, um, and certainly something that, uh.
Maybe that could be an industry that you can.
Certainly I want to include that in your general plan.
Weird, I, I definitely wanted to include an aging element, because, because our demographics, I mean, the numbers don't lie. Most, a majority of people here are over sixty-five, you know? So I, I think about that for old, all areas of town, but old Bisbee especially. You know, because people will take stairs up to their houses and what's gonna happen, you know? So I think you're absolutely right, we need an, we need an aging and, and fortunately, CGO has the, you know, the, the aging, the element. At the AAA, I think they call it. And so, and, and I'm gonna meet up with, um, a planner from CGO and really work on that element of the plan. Because it's something that I really want to address, it's very important to me. So, you're right, yeah, absolutely, we'll be talking about that more in the, in future meetings, I'm sure. Um, so, um, we talked about San Jose, a little bit about, um, the areas, um, Saginaw. What do you all?
Well, my observation, I would make a note here, in, in the existing plan, they say Saginaw planning area.
Yeah, they talked about that.
And, and I kind of thought there's a lot of similarities between these outlined communities, which Saginaw, Bakersville, Tin Town.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Don Louie even, Galena and Coachees Row, that all have some redevelopment potentials.
Mm-hmm.
Where kind of lower, uh, you know, where you still get more economical, affordable.
Yeah.
Land and property.
Yeah.
And rather than, and I think that rather than having, I mean, I would propose in terms of the, as I was reviewing this, would be have a section, it's called that. Expand the section that's now called the Saginaw Land District to include those other areas, rather than lumping them in with, you know.
Warren, or.
With, right.
Yeah.
Which, which there's, I mean, I would separate Bakersville from Warren for that reason. Even though they're contiguous, but anyway, I think there's some redevelopment, certainly there, those are the areas that are eligible for community development grant funds and so forth as well.
Yes. Uh, I, I think, yes, um, we at our council meeting the other day, uh, Keith from CGO, Keith Dennis was here. He was talking about potentially designated Warren as a, not Warren, Saginaw as a blighted area to, so they can get funds to. Say those old houses that are really kind of caving in on themselves to, to, to tear them down. And to, uh, provide funds for rebuilding new houses or, you know, something. Or, you know, like, or this overlay thing, duplexes or something, you know? So that's, uh, something that could really, you know, be great, I think that those neighborhoods would be really fantastic. Uh, especially if there was, um, something to connect them to the other parts, to each other and to other parts of Bisbee. You know, like I think about particularly Galena, how it's kind of over the hill, kind of where the headframe is you're talking about. But I really don't know if there's any way to, to cut over to Tin Town, or sorry, not Tin Town, but to cut over to, um, Bakersville from there. Unless you go up on the highway and down and around to the, to the circle, you know? And so I'm thinking about how you could connect them. Uh, I, I see, um, Bakersville as having potential for being a little commercial center for that area, you know? And again, just light commercial too, just a little bit of expansion. Um, and so the people that live in, you know, Galena could just go over there and go to the, go to a store or something or go out to eat if they had a restaurant there, if they don't.
Well, I think with affordable housing, certainly Bakersville is a, I mean, I'm amazed when I go out and do yard sales, what I, what I find out there. In terms of what people have taken some properties and done some extensive renovation. What I what I find out there in terms of what people have taken some properties and done some extensive renovation and and so I mean that. There's still some blighted areas, I mean, there's people who improve a property, but right next to them is a, you know, a fire trap. So, but that's common in a number of areas, but anyway, these areas that I've made reference to. They have that in common, I guess, and so any any policy would have in terms of stimulating development.
Yeah, policies.
Pick a residential development, it's interesting, Bakersfield was actually the first, when when businesses started moving out of Old Bisbee, that was, that was our commercial district.
Like where the now houses are or where in Bakersfield?
That means DBS was the Safeway store, was when they moved the Safeway from Old Bisbee and that and and then there was. You know, several large appliance stores.
There was a gas station, you remember, there was the gas station, there was the liquor store, you had the Dairy Queen still there.
It's right in the middle, I mean, it makes makes sense.
Yeah, I know, it's a good spot, it's got bones.
And now it's becoming what, I don't know if you guys, and and this is, I think it's a great idea, you have three or four uh. Uh antique shops there, I mean. That's your specialty, dog, but I mean, you have uh how many now, one, two?
Too many though.
You have the thrift shop, you have the guy, yeah, you have what's her name, uh the turquoise building and you have the the guys next to. So you have three of them, right?
Yeah, right, in a little area, it's like, it's like a, it's like a little thrift store district.
It's a retail, you need uh, you know, plates and forks when you first move here.
Yeah, it's becoming, yeah, it's, and I think if if I was to plan this. I will make it become like the antique, you know, s- make it a specialty, encourage this, where. Thrift and antique shop, it becomes the kind of uh, it has it it's own distinction, uh you know, make, you know. I think. That's why I thought it's becoming actually.
Well, likewise, my view in terms of the development of Hillcrest. Likewise, be artist studios, I mean, there's, I mean, that's certainly one of the ways of marketing that in terms of providing. Not only a place to live, but also a, you know, an area which to form your art.
I mean, it's gonna be, uh you know, low income housing, but you could ha- also have an initiative for artist studios. Because there's plenty of low income artists.
It's it's, you know, our first go at this, uh just for for on the Hillcrest was supposed for for. A low housing, but then that didn't work out, it's gonna be affordable, it's a part of the commitment, we get it from the. First and second, but it's no longer gonna be the the.
Low income.
Low income, the guy is, they are in it to make money, it's no longer gonna, you know, like. Our initial phase, our initial step was to get someone to do it, it didn't work out, so now it's gone, someone that's gonna. Develop it, fix it and make it what we call affordable housing. So that's not gonna be, so I think that's that's a good potential for that area, so these people are gonna live there, they're gonna shop there, so it's it's it's.
Yeah, I think you're right, don't want too much tea coming here today. I I think it's definitely got potential if you set the intention for it, you know.
And this 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 will bring in, this will bring in some people that will have housing at the Hillcrest. I don't know how many, how many apartments.
Thirty-ish roughly.
Thirty-ish, and they have, they are, they also comes with the, with the, with the sale on other plot that you can. Add onto and build more, more apartments, so you're talking about that, that will come into the markets, hopefully, these guys can get it together.
Yeah, that'd be great, we could make that happen.
So you'll have some housing, uh some some housing coming in. If that goes.
That could be a substantial amount of houses in the area.
If if Bisbee, that's 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 a good size. Apartment building.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
We keep forgetting about that, but that's that's supposed to should be happening.
Right, yeah, there's a couple of big projects that are kind of hovering in the balance. Right now, you know, there's the Hillcrest, there's the Melody Lane property, there's the property that um. This woman wants to do tiny homes near the Safeway. If that project goes through, then there's gonna be a lot of potential new housing. But um. Yeah, it's kind of exciting, any comments?
Just thinking, oh, you know, assisted living, I think one of, one of the big overlying, I don't know how to address it, but is mental health.
Mental health, uh-huh.
You know, it all ties in, right, your economy, your society, the affordability, it it's all. A real thing. I don't know if we can address it in our plan with specific, you know.
It's becoming more and more of an issue, especially even around Old Bisbee. It that affects the residents and the tourists and.
One, it's all age demographics.
Yeah, age, you mean, you say different, different ages?
All ages.
Oh, all ages, that's right, okay, yeah.
From the one people that don't feel like they can win. To the people who their spouse passes away and they're all alone, you know, it's. It's just something that's a real. Situation is a reality.
Yeah, definitely. That's something I need to look into, um how other plans have addressed that, and to think about a plan for that. Because I think it's definitely something that that needs to be addressed and isn't gonna go away, you know, um.
It's something we could work with the county on.
Yeah, absolutely, we have a lot of resources. Yeah, we 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 have, I think we have resources to just that, um which I'll have to just talk to people, but. Um, okay, so is that everything on those areas?
I think that's quite a bit.
You can dream, okay.
Yeah, hey, you know what, you have to start by dreaming.
Okay, well, really quickly then, I'm gonna go into a couple more growth areas that I think it's not gonna be a lot to talk about. One is the municipal, the Bisbee Municipal Airport Growth Area. Which, does anybody have anything to say about that? Does anybody know about that? I need to get a hold of the airport advisory committee, so.
So my thought on that, so we have, you know, Mexico is now outranked China in GDP. The report came out a couple of weeks ago.
Interesting.
Uh we have Douglas Port of Entry, so what does that mean? Shipping containers, they like freight distribution, so I'm really curious to see what happens in this Douglas. Al- along this border, because you gotta, you gotta move the freight from Mexico into the US. And then from there, you gotta distribute it to the big metros where there's large demand. Maybe stakeholders and expert logistics and trade. To understand the economics and potential industry. That might be an option. I mean, that could be even San Jose, you know, we got Napa Port, but I know there's a lot of land out by the airport.
Yeah, a lot of land out there, we're sure, um so.
But no utilities.
But no utilities. Nothing, no, um. Yeah, um really quickly, did it, is that, how does that work? Is, do they actually have like a distribution point here where they. Unload the shipping containers and then distribute them in other directions, or do they fit the shipping containers to? The destination cities or how, you know?
Uh so there's FMCSA would be the uh for the federal motor carrier. They govern all of that, there's papers and tags. Um when you cross lines, so if you're a carrier, you're a driver, you have to have specific tags to be able to come so far into the border. So you might not have the right to come all the way. So you have to transfer, you know, drop it somewhere.
It's similar to, I I don't know, maybe it's more, to Nogales, basically, a lot of the the companies, a lot of the. The port of entries, because that's a big one, they have warehouses in the United States, so there'll be a lot of logistics here, like she's saying. So so a lot of product products actually, they are brought in in the container and uh. Distributed from these logistic logistic warehouses that are gonna be built. Like because like she said, a lot of the trucks cannot go, so we we drop them here. If you go to the Nogales border, you'll be able to see. The warehouses.
I see, okay.
Yes, so they bring in the stuff and and not all, that some some of the products, some of maybe can go all. But this is where you're mostly, like she said, logistic warehousing, distribution. I mean, we want to see how do we benefit in Bisbee from that, that's 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 the question, I think. Maybe we can benefit because a lot of people who are gonna be involved working on this part of the United States. Uh they need housing, they like to live in Bisbee, Bisbee could be a community where, because Douglas does not have much. In terms of social, I mean, zero zip, doesn't have anything.
The part, there's no party in Douglas.
No, I mean, the Douglas people tell me that, I'm 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 being honest, they tell me this, I mean, I'm not just saying this, uh. They have nothing, no, social, no, no, no.
They had, they had the Last Summer Museum, what did they, what did it say in America?
So I I think we're gonna benefit from people who 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 are gonna be working on this part. They they will need housing, they will need entertainment, they will need, you know, the, you know, all the things that Bisbee offers. In terms of living and experiences. I think that's what we will benefit from, uh other than that, like she said, maybe people who work online and.
I mean, the airport growth area, I mean, I I like it out there and it's, once you get on the other side of the airport, out into those roads. Um you're really looking at um a lot of rolling hills and homesteads and a lot of. State of Arizona truss, state land and grazing. And there is the dump site for the city of Bisbee out there, the old dump site, and I've been doing some research on that and I need to actually. Get a hold of the Arizona Department AZDEQ, because they were supposed to do a report according to their paperwork I got, that was nineteen ninety-one. That they were gonna do an environmental study report for thirty years after nineteen ninety-one. So I'm like, I need to get a hold of them, like, where's those reports, you know? Because I I'm thinking about, because it's owned by the city of Bisbee and I'm thinking this could potentially be another.
Well, on the airport, I I was involved a little bit as a councilperson, because I had to go out there and there were some issues. Uh with the city not taking care of the 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 runway and the grass, even it, you know. Um and basically, the people who have planes who are involved in in this. People having issues getting things done, uh the grass was grown up high and it became very, very unsafe. For for airplanes. Fly in. I was able to make a little dent in this, I got them to go out and do that, but the the biggest issue facing the airport. Uh and if you talk to Steve, uh what's her name, we have a lady that owns uh some of the hangars out there and. I think if you're aware of this and uh the FAA. Yeah, they have some requirements and she's refusing to 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 make uh changes to our hangars. Because we we can get a grant, because I think we will be able to get a lot of planes coming in, but because of those issues. Some safety issues that she had too, she has a fence and the city has been trying to get her to. You have to get the detail on this, it's all.
Yeah, we're gonna have to have some meetings about it.
Yeah, if you if you look into this and she's refusing to budge on on her fence, on her requirement. I think her name is Merly, Merly or someone.
Yeah, I know who to talk about.
I think it had, the airport has a lot of potential, if you want to talk about growth, but to get it uh going. Like I said, uh we'll have to resolve that one big issue that we have with the neighborhood of the airport, so.
Okay, well, that's good to know about that, and then last but not least, I have a um. I um then there's a second page on your agenda packets and it has the um. Uh the ultimate growth boundary, you can see in the city of Bisbee, so there's the brown. That's that's essentially the potential growth boundary, or there's actually existing growth boundary and then. The potential future growth boundary, which is the dotted line, um I'm gonna say that this this map is from two thousand and three. Do you know it? So, that being said. I mean. I almost feel like this map is arbitrary at this point, it's kind of like, oh, yeah, yeah, we could do that. What do you think about this little uh, this little, it's within the city of Bisbee um. Limits and it's this area on the very west end, where Highway ninety-two goes through and it's just ba- basically all open land. Do you have any thoughts on anything in the city of Bisbee? It's just open land, Zone R one, the end.
Power, utility, renewable power, or transmission nearby, maybe there's a potential. Get some infrastructure and then and some land leases, the city owns it.
Yeah, the city doesn't own it, I'm, it's all owned by a lot of random. People. Who looks like they had big ideas and visions and, I don't know, nothing has happened in that time period, but. Yeah, anyway, I I just wanted to get your ideas, because I always look at that and I'm just like, kind of stumped. So I just wanted to just put it out to the, to the, you know, to the um commission and see what you wanted to say.
Are you talking about just that, that?
That little chunk out there where there's nothing. The far west, yeah.
How is that accessible?
Well, there, no, I don't think it's really accessible, there's no, there's no roads, there's just the highway going through it. But it is within the city boundaries of the of Bisbee, so if you wanted to build a house out there. You uh, you know, you'd have to.
Are you talking also west of Wilson Road?
No, west of Wilson Road is county, but you can see that it's it's the yellow line, it's it's basically bounded by that yellow line.
Off like ninety-two? Yeah, there's some. There's some utility lines along there too.
Yeah, there's some utility lines, I think that the sewer line kind of ends at the, or the sewer, or the water line, I should say, probably ends at where the streets are, you can see in the map there. So, anyway, that's just, I just wanted to get a feel for what you guys had to say. And really, if you don't have anything to say about it at all, that's totally fine, I just wanted to know if anybody had any one thing to say about this. You know? And with that, I'm done, you know.
Question about the airport, could you tell me about halfway between Warren and the airport? Last year, somebody opened up an area, they got a nice entrance, but I don't know, in a road. But I don't, I've never heard what.
You're talking about the Gretchen, she has some property there?
No, not at the airport, it's kind of halfway between the airport and Warren. This past year, somebody opened up a fence and there's an entry entrance and a road. I've never ever heard anything that some guy bladed out a road and made this nice entrance. But I never ever heard what's, who that is and what's, what's.
That could be the entrance to the um, so they have a target practice range, the city police do. And there there's these old um drainage, uh settling ponds for the old sewer plant, the old wastewater treatment facility. And um they they have some storage out there and they do some target practice, I think. They do something out there.
Well, this has got to be more than that.
I don't, I haven't seen, is this just happened recently?
No, it's been either six months ago or something. But somebody has made a nice entrance into.
Maybe somebody's gonna build something?
Yeah, I haven't seen anything in my Cochise County records, because you can see, you know, who owns that land.
Well, I guess two other things that I would mention on my list here yet is. I think we need to come in and step up Bisbee to think that they're doing towards redevelopment of property, that's really an innovative. Program here and that needs to be included specifically in our our plan and encourage things like that. Also annexation, there certainly continues to be opportunities for annexation.
The, okay, any particular areas that you're thinking?
Well, certainly the whole area of of uh, what do they call it, the Sunset Acres.
Yes, that was mentioned.
And and certainly, I mean, that is. The moderate income or. For a living.
Sunset Acres is?
Anyway, it's a large area.
Yeah, that's true.
Is it the area south of the senior center?
Yeah.
Right, it kind of parallels.
Yeah, it's becoming, like you said, yeah.
Weren't those regulated income or, uh, low income?
No, I was talking about further down in terms of just the whole development.
Oh, okay.
Historic development that exists, and you, it kind of parallels, uh, Naco Road.
Yeah, there's some, there, it looks like there was maybe some, um, parcels plotted out probably in the fifties or sixties? Because the houses there are definitely look like they're from the mid-century.
Yeah, there's, there's pretty intensive development, there, but anyway.
Yeah.
And also, there's an area, what's it called here, wrote that down here, I forget.
There's North San Jose, north, I guess that little area where there's some roads in the north end of town, that kind of just aren't included. There's Naco.
Well, also, there's an area which is directly below what you're talking about, where the senior center is. I guess called Abanita Flores, which is actually in the county, I didn't realize that, uh, and I don't know why they are.
Flores, okay, we looked at this.
Anyway, it's just on your left at your, well, it's kind of like the next road after, rather turning in with the senior center is. It's kind of the next entrance, anyway, there's quite a number of homes in there. And Flores One actually lives there. And I'm kind of surprised why, um, that hasn't been annexed, I mean, with our, uh, street and infrastructure tax. We could do much more for their streets and so forth than what they can do on their own, I mean, I, I'm surprised that, and there's certainly some other areas that are immediate outline areas from, from San Jose that could be annexed in as well, so yeah, it needs to be mentioned, mentioned at least.
Yeah, okay.
Bernard Rowan, I guess is what the, 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 kicks down Sunset Acres is.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Whoops. Okay, got it. All right, um, if there's anything else?
Okay. Ready to adjourn?
Yep.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Okay, we adjourned, I guess I can't say if I'm ready to adjourn or not, that's you guys' job.